Have a motion to accept those.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then we had a selectman's budget review workshop that was held here Wednesday, October 19th. And if I could have a motion to accept those.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
A little crease.
Won't make much difference.
No. And then we had another selectman's budget review workshop held Wednesday, October 27th. And this one was at six o'clock at night, reasoning to accommodate the library trustees. And could I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor? Aye. We have, we have some certificates that we would like to hand out this morning. These are your service award recognition certificates. And our first one, and I think Peter, Peter Lutucky is here. This is for five years, Peter. Do you believe it? There you go. Congratulations.
Thank you, Peter.
Good service, thank you.
And is Patrick Riley here? No, Patrick is not. Patrick Riley is, he'll, he'll receive his award, and that's for 10 years of service. Okay? And is Joel, Joel, Joel Pickwitz is 15 years of service. Oh, guys. And Dave Estes?
He's a court.
He's not, he's a court, he's a court. Dave Estes is also 15 years of service. And is Chris Clamott here? There he is. Hey, Chris. And this is 15 years of service. I got to leave this, Chris.
How many?
Thanks, sweetie.
Fifteen, I think.
Great job.
Good luck, Peter.
And Steve. Steve is 20 years of service.
Oh, no. Thank you.
And last but not least, is Colleen. Colleen is five years of service. Make sure you get those in that note. And next on the agenda is our tax collector, tax collector town clerk. And that's in regards to new hire, correct?
Yes.
All right.
I'm sorry to say, I only have one today.
That's all right.
We have Jennifer Thomas.
Hi, Jen.
Years of Belmont residence. She started two weeks ago. Doing a good job.
Awesome, awesome.
And then I hired Lee Smith, next selectman meeting operator.
All right. Great, thank you. Welcome aboard.
There we go, yeah. Get to my highest.
And then we have a sewer new hire. Is that Craig or mine? They're doing this. Craig? Awesome, thank you. Welcome aboard, Chris. All right. And then we have the land use administrative assistant introduction and promotion.
Yes, this is Susan Austin. She was first hired as a part-time land use clerk. And with some retirement in the office, she had, we thought it would be best to promote her into the full-time administrative assistant. So in December, after some training, she will become full-time.
Awesome, thank you. Welcome. Thank you. Park and ride replacement lights.
Yes.
Is that you, Patrick?
Yes, I am.
It is.
From what I can gather, the history is years ago, six stadium lights were donated to the town and put into the park and ride. It was discovered they were too bright and they were shut off. In the meantime, LED lights were put in between the two parking lots. They're on a pole, they're LED lights. Over time, 50% of those are burned out. So what we don't have is adequate light in the, in the park itself. So what if...
Is that why all the campers are moving in?
What's that?
Is that why all the campers are moving in?
Right, we, we have a series of campers. We have a series of homeless people in their cars that are using that as a place to stay overnight. I think some of that is because it is dark and it is easy. I know Steve and his force do a good job trying to move them along, but they keep coming back. It's a rotating thing every day. Trash, we're having to manage that. So what I did was, I contacted the town's electrician, Bo Overelectric, to just replace the walls. Unfortunately, the unit is...
They don't make them?
Yeah, exactly.
Oh, no.
They're, they're sold.
Yeah.
They can't replace, the whole unit needs to be replaced. And that cost is $1,800.
Okay.
Right now, we're running with, there's a few bulbs in the front unit that work and a few in the back. It's very dim there at night. Just concerned about anybody getting in and out of their car, the shadows and everything. So that's, that's why I'm asking that we get that, those units replaced.
How long would they last? Is the new ones put in, how long?
Well, LED lasts, I mean, how old are the ones that are there? And they're, and we've only lost 50%. Maybe Craig, Craig, do you know how long those were? Probably 20 years, 20 years.
Really?
So, so that costs, Bo came in and said, yeah, he can get re...
It's the wind.
He can get, he can get replacements, put them up. And while he's there, if we want, while he has the boom there, we can take down the old stadium lights.
Okay, that was going to be my next question. Why do we keep the other things up there to rot and eventually fall down and create another issue?
Right, you're going to have a liability for us. They are signing the rest and peel all the poles and everything. So it's $1,800 for the light replacement. It's an additional $780 to take the poles down. He'll just set them on the ground and I'll work with DPW to take them and move them to the, to the highway garage and store them there.
Why do we have to even store them? Can't we just, isn't there such thing as metal, are they metal?
Yeah. We can have the poles up or say...
Leave that up to Craig.
Yeah.
If he has an iron, something going to the iron pile.
Yeah, I was going to say, isn't that iron?
We'll get rid of it.
Yeah, we don't...
Just, just a little background, so you guys know. So when that park and ride was built, those stadium lights, I mean, this is my memory, but they were donated.
Yeah.
Completely. And I think there were, I think there were a total of six of them.
Yeah, that's what he said, yeah.
So he took down two, well, the problem was when they turned them on, it lit up the town. So they eliminated the four on the outside and left the two in the middle and replaced those. So I'm, I mean, that was Bob Bennett days, so I'm thinking it was at least, I mean, it was at least 20 years ago. So that's pretty good service out of a couple lights, yeah.
Well, and I would imagine if you replace them, I would only assume that, that electric whizing are probably more efficient now than a bulb that's maybe 20 or so. All right. I don't have a problem with that. I think it's something that's...
I'd make a motion to accept the article that Patrick walked for us, $1,800 for the four LED poles installed, and the removal of $780 to get the poles down the ground while they're there.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Take four.
All right, thank you.
Aye.
All right. We have Belmont Bogeybusters snowmobile trail permission.
Yes, the Bogeybusters have come forward with a permission slip, written or verbal permission to use the trails. They have a list of, and they only provided me with map and lots. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight trails that they use for snowmobiling. This trail permission can either be indefinite, one year or five years. That's up to you, how long you want to grant the permission for. And the state of New Hampshire, actually, I didn't realize this, provides their insurance coverage for them to have to use the trails.
Well, my only, I mean, I don't have a problem even looking at five year. I guess my only question would be, is that if, and not knowing exactly where the trails are. I assume this is for, the trails are on Belmont property?
Correct.
All right. And I guess, do we have the availability if we end up having to use our property for something different than what they're using it for? Can we break that particular, you know? I mean, is it something that's instilled if we sign it for five years?
Maybe I'll stick with the one year.
You could do it every year.
That would be my only...
Yep.
Question on that. I don't want to sign an agreement with them and then three years from now, we have to do something where one of the trails are and then they get upset.
I don't think it's a burden on anybody to do it a year at a time.
Okay, all right. And why don't we do a year at a time?
Okay.
And then that kind of, and it's not, it's a little take a work, but...
Yep, and they'll just mark it in the calendar for themselves to come forward every year and...
Yeah.
For the board at that time to grant permission.
Yep.
Okay, I'll fill this in and have you sign it off.
Awesome, thank you. All right. Our next item is a cemetery trustee's legal request. Is that you, Sharon?
Good morning.
Good morning.
So Alicia's request, I kind of, kind of piece off everything. So they're two-sided, and hopefully going to give you all the same side up. So Highland Cemetery is... This is Highland Cemetery, that's Churchill. On the opposite side are all of the other cemeteries that have perpetual care funds and trust funds. So what I tried to do last week on the advice of somebody I knew, I reached out to Laura, the town council, to see if there was some way that we could get advice from her to figure out these three legal issues that we have going forward. And so I did that now because we are projected to have between $1,800 and $2,000 left from our budget for this year. So I thought maybe if we could enter into some kind of agreement with her, that we would be able to use those funds that were left as kind of a retainer moving forward, or if there was some kind of service that we could do now that would use that money to offset, because we already had it. And so she said that she had to have a conversation with Alicia and that she would call me back. She said what we were looking at, she didn't really think that was a problem one. But as far as how she got paid was a question and she had to run through. So one of the major ones is the perpetual care funds. And as you know, the trust, the trust funds, and it's the general belief that the person who opened the trust fund is the person who this is supposed to be for. So at Highland Cemetery, I'm going to start right at the top, Kate Wells. Anything to the left of the line is the principal of her trust fund, which is money that just has to stay there, it can't be used. Anything on the right side of that line is the income. And this was given to me last year. The date is December 31st, 2021. So, for example, the ending balance of the interest on Kate Wells' trust fund is $31,569.58. So we went through and we added up, the highlighted at the very bottom right under Highland, $63,686.25 is the interest-only assets that are in the trust funds for Highland Cemetery only. On the other side, it has all of the others. South Road is of course exempt from these, but this side added up has $40,454.4 for a combined total of $104,136.29. So we wanted to hire the attorney to either, A, help us file a site prayer petition when the time comes to be able to utilize some of these funds for instances that the cemetery needs, or to get a clear definition from the court as to what we can or cannot use these funds for and what to do with the funds that we can attach to a person. Because I can tell you, Kate Wells with that trust fund and her husband is down on the bottom, 1928 Walter C. Wells, his has $4,519 in it. They died in the 1950s and they're buried in San Bernardino, California. So this money just sits there. And we should either, I feel, find a way to utilize it or return it to an entity that can utilize it because they had a desire for it to be spent somewhere. And we, I think we need court clarification.
I, I have, if I may. I wouldn't release, I don't want to get involved with an attorney on this, and I don't, I would rather first talk to the trustees of the trust fund, the men that, the two gentlemen that have been looking at this. We have these people in those positions. I'm not questioning the figures, I just want to know how this really works. And my second point of view before I, to be quite frank with you, turn the cemetery trustees over to $104,000, based on the experience of the last three years, where you've spent money and got nothing back for it. And you got nothing back for it. You gave a man permission to cut a bunch of trees over on Lamprey Road out of a cemetery. It's got some beautiful trees, yeah, there's a couple dead ones, but they're nothing more than a high stump. I said, is there, that cemetery that you want to cut all the trees in?
Which one?
Lamp, the one on Lamprey Road. I don't think it is. Last, right beside your, your committee member's house. He's, there's one house between the two of them. And you, you engaged, one on Facebook, and you engaged a logger out of Concord to come up. There was no bidding done. Well, this, we, I think we all remember this. We ended up as a town paying that man over $3,000 because you...
But that's not our fault, that's yours.
No.
It is.
You, you, you made the deal with him and you're...
You told us to not, you told us after we signed a contract with him to do that job, saying you're not going to allow him to do it. And the fact that you had to pay him is not our fault.
May I, may I finish?
No, because we've gone over this...
We're going to go over, we're going to...
And we're not going to... Okay, okay, okay.
Let me, let me finish. Let me finish. We had to pay him on the advice of our attorney.
Okay. Well, here's what I'm not going to do. I'm not going to sit here again and go through this. This is an option. You're a member of the New Hampshire Cemetery Association? I am. All right. And I went through this on the advice of Terry Knowles. I've also had in-depth conversations with Tom Donovan at the Department of Justice. Okay, so the New Hampshire Cemetery Association won't help to, I mean, that's why, that's why everybody pays dues to this New Hampshire Cemetery Association. Well, it's not something they did. And the meeting that we just had, Terry Knowles was there. She was our guest speaker. Yeah. So I have her email and she said, I'm absolutely, I will, because she used that. She was like, the Knowles family has this plot and, you know, the ambience happens. And then I sent to her, I said, oh, what happens if you're out there and something happens and you're out there? She's like, that's a very good question and we'll get to that. So no one in the state of New Hampshire has, there has to be these everywhere, obviously. But that's what site prayer petitions are for. The town of Brentwood has done it. Even Laura said she's done a couple and they're not a problem, and then she knows how to do it. But I don't know, I don't think it's something that we would definitely get all of that money at once. I think we would have to plan a project and then get the petition and then ask the court, hey, can we? Now, obviously, obviously, Dave, you know, the first, the first name that comes to me is Dave because that was, you know... But I, yeah, Dave is bottom line, it has to go to that person. It's like, but she's not here. Like, if you look at the one on the... But if he's a trustee, trustee of the trust funds for all these cemeteries, all right? There's got to be something somewhere, and I'm only guessing. There's got to be something somewhere that there's a process to go through for this. There's got to be some right and wrong ways, I guess, is... Well, I have emails from all the conversations. I had an email conversation with Dave Karen and he told me to call the Department of Justice. I called the Department of Justice. We used Abby Heard as an example. She bought a trust fund for the cemetery in the Apple Orchard. It's about $3,000. Well, Ms. Abby is buried in Union Cemetery in Laconia with her husband, because she died in Lincoln. So then I did a genealogy of all of the people that were there to find out if anybody in there was related to her, and they're not. However, her parents are buried across the street at the Conchian, geez. Conchian, yeah. There in the Young Cemetery. So I sent that to Tom at the DOJ. And he says to me, well, you're a little Nancy Drew figuring this out. He's like, obviously, it's a typo, use the money for her parents. But you go back and you say to Dave, well, this guy said to do this. And he's like, no, we can't do that. That's not how that works. So what you're, what you're saying is, is that we've got to, we've got to have an attorney to give a legal something or other. Right. I guess, and again, I, I guess, the only thing that makes me a little nervous is obviously, and we're not going to get into an argument about it, all right? We've heard it, we're, we've been over this time and again, is the fact that, um... How do I want to say this? I guess the question is, is that we've got $104,000, all right? And I guess what John's concerned about is the fact that if all of a sudden there is a court decision and now you've got $104,000, obviously, I guess, this group is a little concerned as to how it will be spent or whatever. Because once it's gone, it's gone. And these cemeteries are going to be here a whole heck of a lot longer than we all are, all right? And so there has to be some sort of a, um...
Checks and balance.
Thank you. Well, that's... Yeah, checks and balance. So it's not, I don't think, I don't think that we could just have all of that to do with what we want with because like, it's assigned to a specific cemetery. Well, I understand that, it may not happen, but, okay, but I... But we don't know, and we're not going to know that, and we're not going to be, we're not getting anywhere. It's just, it's... So you're here to ask what? Let's go back to... So we had to put $5,000 in our budget to help cover legal expenses with the three legal issues that we had. And that was, when you guys made the budget review, it was the $5,000 that you guys removed from. So you have money in capital? Can capital be used for an attorney fee? I'm just asking. I don't think, I don't think she, Laura told me it couldn't. Okay.
Laura seemed to think that'd be a gray line and that she really wasn't sure that. We'd have to go look back at how the account was created for the language.
I don't think the cemetery ones have any, but we're saving to do a major project in $5,000 a year. Obviously, if we get a court decision on this, you won't have to have any more money in capital because you're going to have plenty of money to be able to do capital things with this, with this money. So I would think that if we can use capital money to pay for an attorney, because what's going to happen is you could, in the long run, when this court makes this decision or whomever, you're not going to have to have a capital because you're going to have this to do your capital projects with. Am I correct or not? I believe so. I mean, if anything, if that, that's... I would want a, I guess, if we can use capital monies, I guess we'll have to...
We'd have to look at the original warrant that was created.
If we can use capital monies, and, and again, I'm, I just, I just don't want to think, and again, you can't tell me this. I don't want to think that if we get a court decision, that you can take out monies and do whatever, that now you're on a, you know, that it's going to be gone. I guess I need some assurance. I need some, some assurance that there's going to be a, an agreement made above and beyond if this is available to be used. So, and then just to be clear, this is only the interest? I understand that. It's not the principal? And the principal is there and it would just keep going and keep going? Yeah, I understand that.
Sharon, is, am I understanding that if you do get these funds, that they're only for the maintenance of those lots that those people are in?
There's, that's what the trustee of trust funds is saying, and that's why, but towns go by using the site prayer petition. Like seeing, I think Brentwood got theirs and they got some, they took some trees down, they rebuilt a road with it. But they got a site petition from the Superior Court saying, we want to, this is what we want to do. This is an estimate of what it's going to cost. And I'll be perfectly honest with you because I sit on the board for South Road Cemetery. And the South Road Cemetery Association stopped putting money into that trust fund years ago, okay? And we created some, not we, the president then, created some T-Roe Price accounts or whatever. And we actually used the interest from those only for our maintenance of our cemetery. And so for whatever reason, I don't, can't answer this because it was before my time, but Bob LaMay did a lot of work on that. And I don't know if there was no way of even getting that money out of this. Did you call Bob and I'm like, and I just... And, and, and I, and it's, I wouldn't be surprised. We use nothing out of, we don't even, it's there. We haven't even... We are only allowed to expend money out of those two accounts. Like, we got a check from the Sargent Fund for the race across America. Yeah. And I still haven't gotten that $250 and moved it to where it needs to go. Yeah. And so we had talked about opening a checking account, like the library trustees had, so that we could do sundries and stuff. I think that it might be nice if we could get Dave Karen to come into the next meeting, all right? And hopefully before the next meeting, we'll have, we'll have an answer as far as if we are able to use some capital funds to try to get some of this invested capital money in a roundabout way out of the trust funds. And maybe we'll have a little bit more information.
And when I did have a brief conversation with Laura, our attorney, she did say she has gone to the courts with these plenty of times, has been successful.
Okay.
So she thinks she would gather a bunch and go at one time.
Sure, sure. But I also don't want, I mean, Dave Karen's been doing this for us, for the town for...
25 years?
Yeah, a long time. And obviously, we don't want to, him to think, at least that would be my feeling, that we're trying to undermine what he's been volunteering to do for so many years. So I think that's important, okay? And see if we can get, take those monies out of capital. Because in reality, you're going to have more money, you won't need capital, really, if it goes forward. All right? That would be my thought. Are you fine with that?
Yeah.
You fine with that? Do we need a motion for that? Or it's just kind of, we're going to do a little bit more research and...
I don't think we are yet.
I'll have to find the original warrants.
I think I actually might have...
I think I do too. I just have to look at the wording.
I think I read it in something that I thought from Sarah. Okay, all right, okay? And then... I would like to reiterate our request by the board as allowing to allow us to have two alternates for one year, please.
Who was that again? I didn't quite hear it.
She wants two alternates for one year? Alternates for one year. Isn't there something that has to go through the vote?
It's got to go through...
It's got to be a one?
I think she's looking for your blessing to move forward with it.
Actually, no, it's two different things. I'm hoping for two alternate board members to sit in positions when one of us isn't available for a period of one year. And it's going to come back in December or January and ask you to put an article on the ballot to increase the cemetery trustee's fee from three to five members. I can't answer that because I'm not, I don't know what the legality, the legal...
Well, I think most of your boards can have alternates. You have to put an ad in and...
And advertise it?
Advertise it, and then they would have to interview them on their own board, like they do on the planning board, zoning board. So I think she has a right to do that.
Do that? All right, I'll have the R.S.A. for that because the cemetery, this meeting gives us that. All right, all right.
Okay.
All right. Okay, what do we have for other new business, Alicia?
Cynthia, the Town Clerk Tax Collector, wanted, tax collector, wanted me to update you that, um, about a year or so ago, the state had created the Homeowner Assistance Fund. It was due to the fallout of COVID and anyone who couldn't pay their taxes or water and sewer bill due to COVID and losing their jobs. Uh, she has been successful in getting fifty, fifty-seven thousand, five hundred and fifty-eight dollars on one account to bring their, um, past due up to, up to.
Recent?
Recent and current and they have refinanced and they're escrowed in. So, uh, I just wanted to relay that, that that's a good chunk of change. And she's gotten actually more funds from this Homeowner Assistance Fund to clean up either water and sewer bills that have been passed due and taxes.
Nice. And so take advantage of some of that money.
Yes.
All right, okay. Um, no other new business?
No.
All right. Onto all business, code enforcement update. Mark. Good morning.
Mark.
I saw some scuttlebutt about Johnson Street again. Uh, people back in the house?
Uh, so they, they've been in and out fairly consistently. Um, I'm, I'm there, you know, basically any, anytime that I'm, I'm driving by, I stop, I walk around the house, I pull on all the plywood and if I find something loose, uh, the management company is a little bit better about responding now, getting somebody out there in a reasonable amount of time to, you know, to resecure it. Uh, he was back in there last Friday. And hopefully we have things to a point where they can't get back in without cutting holes in the side of the building.
And any idea, any, any idea when they might bring a doctor in?
So there's a hearing on the 10th, I believe.
Of November or December?
Of November.
All right.
Down in Manchester, uh, Superior Court, is that what they said? Uh, so Superior Court where the, the writ of ownership is going to be discussed with previous owner and a representative from, you know, Deutsche Bank.
Yeah.
Uh, so based on how that goes, um, previous owner can either continue to contest, which will kick it out till, uh, till, you know, January, some, some type of January. They think that they'll actually get a court date. Um, he seems to be representing himself. Um, he, uh, the pre- previous owner tells me that, um, that he has some, some type of, of representation, but won't provide me with any, you know, name or contact, you know, phone number or any, anything like that. Um, and from what, uh, Driscoll said, uh, all paperwork is, is submitted in, in, in his name. So the ex, the, the assumption right now is that he's representing himself, uh, which probably won't go, um, it won't go about for him, um, in the, uh, in the hearing. Um, so we might get some good, good news, you know, sooner or later. But he does have the option to, you know, to contest and get a court date, which again, will, will get kicked out till, uh, till January.
All right.
Um, I'm still trying to work with the, with the management company, um, for quote unquote relocating the, uh, the degree on, on the property. They're not telling me no, um, you know, but she, she keeps telling me that, by all, all appearance, she keeps bringing that idea forward to the decision makers. Uh, and they're, they're, they're not saying yes or no. Uh, so that's, that idea is, is still in the book.
Okay. So, you know, I think for a while the house was quote unquote for sale.
Still is.
Oh, it's using the old pitches.
Yes, still using the old pitches, yes.
Okay, all right. Well, okay, so your update other than that?
Um, I, so I, I left you a packet for one, uh, one thirty depot.
Yes.
I, I think last we knew, uh, he was going to be in, uh, speaking with you.
All right.
Um, my most recent conversation, I believe, was, uh, was last Friday. Uh, once again, seemed to show surprise that, you know, any, any and all of this, um, is, is happening. So I included, you know, all the, uh, all the letters, uh, showing that there's no way that, that this is a surprise.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so that's, like I said, I don't, I don't know if he's speaking with you today. Um, he told me that he was. Um, but, uh, so that's, that, that's where we're at on one thirty depot. Uh, we got a, a letter from, uh, from Driscoll to send, uh, send to him. That was delayed for, uh, for some reason. So I had sent out one based on the, the, uh, the conference call, uh, that we had, giving him the, the thirty days to reapply for, uh, for the junkyard permit because currently it's operating illegal, uh, junkyard. Uh, so I, I just got this letter, um, on Friday, uh, when I was out of inspection. So I needed to talk to Alicia to see if we're gonna, if we're gonna send out that one in addition to, uh, the one that I sent out.
Okay.
Um, so that's, that's where we're at on, on, on one thirty. He's been advised that he needed, that he needs to reapply for, uh, for the junkyard, which will ultimately be denied due to various, you know, reasons and, and setbacks since July first. Uh, but the, uh, Driscoll wanted us to, uh, to formally say that again, uh, and, and give, you know, give a period of time.
So how long have you been without a junkyard permit? When, when did it pick fire?
So we failed to, or we, we told, um, we did not renew his, his latest license, uh, June of twenty-one.
What do you want to know?
And then in November of last year, uh, you decided to give him basically a, a year from when we, uh, when we denied his renewal to bring the property into compliance in order to process his renewal, uh, which he did make on June third of, of twenty-two of this year.
So has he done anything to approve it at all or?
Uh, in the middle of the winter, he got rid of some tires. Uh, when I say some tires, he probably got rid of fifteen hundred to two, to two thousand tires.
Wow.
Uh, they, they went, uh, they went in a box truck, um, went away. He still complains every time I talk to him that he, that he didn't get paid for them. Uh, he has gotten rid of a couple of cars, um, out of the, uh, out of the front, uh, but that's, that, that's it.
So the back is pretty rolled up, is it now? I mean.
Yes, yeah, it's, it's not a lot. Um, he, he and I walked out there probably in April. Uh, there's another mountain of, uh, of, of tires in the way of actually getting anything into that lot or out of that lot. Um, it's basically the, the, the fence or the, the opening in the, you know, in, in the fence, the gate, uh, it, the tires are right behind that, uh, that gate. So anything, even if you wanted to move everything in the back today, um, he couldn't do it because the tires are in the way.
Well, let's hope he gets it taken care of.
Well, at, at.
It's kind of an eyesore going out of town.
Based on, on the decisions that, that the select board has, has made, um, he does not have the option to come back into, uh, to come back into compliance to maintain the, the junkyard. He's, he's done with the, with the junkyard and his only option is car removal, tire removal and junk removal, which I've informed him of, you know, numerous times. And again, that's where it comes back to, well, I never heard about this. Um, and then we have the entire revisit of the numerous conversations and letters that, uh, and correspondence that we had.
Don't let up.
Okay.
Don't let up.
Right.
It's time.
Um, yeah, so that, that's Johnson, um, that's.
Depot.
That's Walker.
Hmm.
Um, what's the other one in the, in the books? Um, I haven't seen anything from Driscoll on the seven fifty-two, uh, Laconia Road.
Oh, that's right, yeah.
Uh, one of the, one of the major ones from a year ago, um, Clark has, he has, I, I actually walked his property with him a little over a week ago. And he's, he's made ma- massive amounts of cleanup, um, out there. Uh, unfortunately, I have, I, we had talked and we came up with a schedule that he was going to move from the road back. Um, he didn't do that, so you really can't see a whole lot from the, from the road. Uh, but when he and I walked down, down and around, um, he, he has to have more, more than fifty percent of, of the property, uh, cleaned, cleaned up, cleaned up. Uh, so that, that's great. Um, however, now he has a couple of vehicles parked between the fence and the road and they're in a bright way and I'm now, so now I'm, I'm, you know, pestering him about, about that on a, you know, fairly regular basis. Uh, so there's been a lot of movement on that. There's been a lot of movement on, uh, Genox, uh, as well on, uh, on Rogers Road. Uh, he's gotten a lot of, a lot of junk and trash out there. Still has a long way to go, uh, but he's, he's doing it now.
You're doing a good job, Mark.
All right, Mark.
It's a hard situation, still a good job.
I'm basing it on those.
Yep.
Yeah, well, obviously, I think it's been this board's decision to, um, as far as, as moving forward with this stuff. I mean, we've got to clean it up. It's just brutal.
Definitely.
Appreciate it. Appreciate your work on it, that's for sure.
Keep, keep up the good work, Mark. Appreciate it.
I have asked Mark to be on standby just in case, um, he does come for the non-public and you wish to bring him in to confer some information.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, skate park update from Shakka Regional School District.
So last week I got a call from Mike Darcy, at the superintendent at the school. He was not able to come today due to, um, situation at the school. So he did send me an email and I will read that into the record. Uh, this was sent to Amanda and Barbara. I think they are the committee members of the, the skate park.
Okay.
Um, and then I just asked him to forward it to me to send to you. So I will read what he wrote. By consensus of the school board at last night's meeting, they do not want to move forward with leasing or selling the property to the town for the construction of the skate park. Their main reasons include holding on to the property in case there is a need for school district purposes in the future, as well as a safety concern due to the high volume of traffic during drop-off and dismissal at the middle school. I know this is not good news to you, but please know that I and the school board continue to support the project as it was initially proposed to the Belmont Board of Selection. Thank you, Mike Darcy.
Well, I guess it's back in the committee's hands.
Yep.
I mean, it's, it's.
You're right.
Yeah. We own the property, but we can't use the property. Okay, all right. Um, whoop. Budget item adjustments, Alicia.
Yes, there's two items that were placed on the budget in double places. So for the water budget, I am removing a hundred thousand from the water department's budget because we had put it into, uh, a capital as well. So we don't want to raise and appropriate twice. So I'm just backing out the one under their budget. So that will reduce their budget to two hundred and fifty-five thousand, one hundred and forty-one and ninety-two dollars.
That must have been for the monies that we're putting away for capital for future.
Yep, we just doubled it by accident.
All right, okay.
And then in the capital outlay, the request for the ambulance, we had put in fifty thousand for the deposit, but we actually really need to do the entire request as we're going to, on the warrant, it will.
Incentive.
Exactly. It'll be the five hundred and seventy-five thousand and the warrant will read to raise and appropriate the five hundred and seventy-five thousand to come out of the social ambulance fund with fifty thousand as the deposit coming out in twenty twenty-three. And then we will have to spell out the lease arrangement, uh, in the next.
So, and that fifty thou-, that fifty thousand is part of the five hundred and seventy-five?
So it was.
You might want to make sure that that's, um, clarified.
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
So just those two changes.
All right, okay. Now we'll move on to the safer grant adjustment, uh, safe, I'm sorry, safer grant discussion. Obviously, there's been a lot of, um, discussion in regards to this grant. Some of it, um, a lot of innuendos, including a couple of threats, but we'll, um, overlook that at the moment. Um, I spent a lot of time looking into this grant. Um, obviously, we listened to everyone and I'm going to set up, I set up my computer, did some research, made some phone calls, and I'm going to read so that there's no, um, whoop, not that one. So that there's no misunderstanding as to what I found out in my research.
Alicia, thank you.
I'll leave this one for the minute.
Thank you.
All right. Um, because there were some things stated that were not correct with this grant and some things that were not part of our meetings or minutes. So I'm going to read this and then I will open it up for any public discussion, all right? And, um, I guess under, I under consider it considerable thought and consideration into the safer grant that the town of Belmont has been awarded feel that due to the hiring of two firefighter paramedics in twenty twenty-two, that was part of our twenty twenty-two budget, at the request of the fire chief, has been made and that the appropriate, appropriate steps in increases staffing levels have been accommodated. In twenty twenty-one, when our fire chief came to us asking for additional staff, we agreed to that increase as we were told it was needed and that it would put the department in a better place. We were not made aware at any time from twenty twenty-one until now that the depa-, that the department was in dire need of six more additional staff. Belmont, as most towns in the state and across the country, are facing hard economic times. And I feel that increasing our staffing level this much at one time is not what is right for Belmont. When the grant is over, keeping this many new employees will have a hard hit to the budget and the taxpayers of Belmont. To put it in perspective, hiring six additional members to the Belmont Fire Department for just wages and benefits alone would have a five hundred thousand dollar increase yearly to the town budget. Now, that's obviously after the three years. Not taking into consideration the other related co- costs for each employee. This would approximately add forty-five cents per thousand to the tax rate. With that said, I'd like to make a motion to instruct our town administrator to submit a request to FEMA requesting that our initial grant award be reduced to reflect the hiring of two firefighter paramedics and not six. The reason I made that motion is that we are under no obligation to accept the six. We have done our homework. I've done my homework. I've done my research. We can change that. We will not be blackballed. We will not be redlined. It will not affect the fire department for future grants, the police department for future grants, the highway department. This is very common with this particular grant. Um, I'll open it for any comments from the public. Would anyone like to speak on it? Nobody wants to speak.
I, I wish the board, if we could share this, uh, the decision on this, or I don't know if this is a full board decision or not.
This is me, this is me.
Uh, I wish they would reconsider that. Um, if you look at the amount of calls that we are doing, uh, we're in need of more personnel. Uh, we have back-to-back calls many times. I've gone running in the pickup truck to medical calls by myself while I'm waiting for an ambulance to turn around at the hospital so we can get back and, and do a medical call. Because we don't have personnel, even if I took it in, the second ambulance there, I can't transport by myself. Uh, there's not the opportunity that people have, uh, back, I was on a call company. I've been on the department for thirty-one years between call company and full-time. And back, people had, uh, time on call company, able to come in. Life was a lot different back twenty years ago. People's schedules are so much busier now. Uh, we don't have the opportunity to have call members coming in all the time. Sometimes we do, some, most times we don't. This is something that other departments around that are running about the same amount of calls as us comparatively have, if, if these four people aren't shift, uh, twenty-four, seven.
I think one of the things, and, and I think we had brought this up the last time, was the fact that six people, they, I believe they have to be, the grant states that they have to be certified firefighter paramedics. All right?
That's incorrect. Firefighter EMT.
Well, fire, right.
Oh, it's different. Firefighter EMT.
Oh, EMT, what? Okay, all right. EMT, I, I don't know.
Medical training.
All right, medical training. And I think, as we all know, as we all know, we're going to steal, I guess, the lack of knowledge, what else to call it? We're going to.
The word is poaching.
Poaching, oh, there we go. We're going to have to poach.
That's true.
We are going to have to poach to, we feel we are going to have to poach to fill these six positions, all right? Um, because we hear there's not enough people out, there's not enough first responders out there, all right? And I guess, I guess, I don't want to. upset a neighboring town because we've taken two or three of their people because they came to Belmont and left their town short. So, our feeling was where we, my feeling is, is where we've added two, since this grant went in, we've added two full-time people. Then, we accept this grant for two, all right, because there is expense, all right? Even when you accept two, there is expense to the budget. No ifs, ands, or buts. And then, maybe in next year's budget, not this year, next year's budget, you put two full-time ones in, all right? Then the, how, this is for three years, I believe. I mean, there's ways of doing it without doing a, so to speak, poaching, all right? We're going to poach slowly, not, you know, six at a time. So, that was my theory.
Well, on that being said, actually, as far as what, I know as far as Belmont is actually a desirable town for people to come to, not even having to look to try to get people from other, other communities or that are, you know, working full-time someplace else. Belmont is actually a desirable town. We have a very good fire department. We have a good work relationship in our fire department. Our location gives us access to other towns that we go to for fires a lot, just because where we are, such, you know, located there. We go to a lot of towns for fires, and that's what firefighters like to go do, is go do their job. But it's, I actually believe Belmont is a, you know, would not have to take and try to steal something from another town. We wouldn't be able to get some people. And granted, yes, there is not a lot of people out there, same as any other workforce out there for, in any other jobs. I mean, with police departments and so forth also, and in the public sector. There isn't, I mean, before you put an ad and people for firefighter, you'd get thirty applications, you know, but that was ten years ago.
Sure.
It's, it's not happening now. And as far as the, you know, trying to get two now, and then we're going to put into the budget for two later, if we could, if we went with the six now, and we may get six, we may not get six. We may get four that, that we can get and, and still be looking for the other two dur- during this three-year period. And I know you're saying as far as a financial hardship or a financial, you know, bit that's going to come on after the three years, is there no way that a capital reserve fund can be set up for wages, that money can be put in the way over these three-year period to take in...
That's, that's, that's like left pocket and right pocket.
Well, I'm talking, yes, but then, well, you either put a big, you know, a large amount here or a little amount here to take in paper that figure amount at the end of the three-year period.
Tom, I'll be perfectly honest with you. Anyone that I've spoken to, taxpayers-wise, that I have spoken to, you know what the first thing that comes out of their mouth?
What's going to cost you now?
No. Now, we need an addition to the fire station. And I know, we've been told that there's plenty of room, but that, that is what the taxpayers, anyone that I've spoken to, that's what they've said. Just one second, please. Um, no, um, this gentleman, one second, I'm sorry, you didn't have your hand up, as no. A gentleman here.
I just, I live above a plumber's building. Inquiring as to how you came about the necessity for two-person versus six, uh, first step, second step. If you, as the chairman of the select board, had agreed that the fire department is in need of two people, you petitioned FEMA to get this grant reduced to two, and they denied it. Are you committed to add two additional personnel to this year's budget? So, so based on what assessment and knowledge and research have you done to decide that it's okay to add two off of the grant versus whether they really need it or not?
I, I personally don't question the need, okay?
No, it's not, yeah.
It's not, the number six, this didn't seem to work for us, because there is a cost of doing business. We added two last year. My goal would be to add two this year and add two next year, and we're easing into it. It's not like we're jumping all in the bucket at once. My other question, which I didn't ask the chief, and yes, you can't answer this. The, the college, do we pull any people out of the college? I mean, I used, I thought, in the back of my head, I recall that some of the students, while going to college into their fire protection program, would actually stay in our station. The previous team, I made that, I didn't hear that from you, Michael. I heard from my previous team.
We had that discussion before. So, Belmont is a structured student program. They're very structured. So, when you come in, you learn, you know, you, your rides are cruise, you learn how to do the job, you lead. You're, you're very desirable by other departments, as well as ourselves. If you are a eighteen, nineteen, twenty-year-old going to a college, would you prefer being in an organization that has a little more flexibility or, you know, a little more ease, a little less rules? Or do you want to be governed by a department that is strict? Depends on how you drive this. Right now, when we first started this program with the student, we were one of three departments that did this. Now, we're one of fourteen or fifteen departments that do this. So, now we have fifteen kids going there. There's not fifteen, there, there's so many other departments that are drawing these that they, that it's almost impossible to get them.
But my understanding of that, and again, it goes before your term as the chief, that these students were allowed to stay in our fire department. They lived there, so they didn't have to pay room and board at the college if they came from other communities. They stayed there and worked there. I don't know that, because I don't, I'm not telling you how to do your job.
That's, that's incorrect. No, other places are doing the same thing. So, it, it's just a, now you have a pool that was this big with one fish coming into that pool. Now, we have fifty fish going into the same pool, a lot smaller, now, who may not get any larger, or maybe smaller, but there's more people vying for these. That's, that's the problem with that. And I will say on the record, because this was brought up, two things I'd like to say, I've got a second on the floor here. Is one, we're not looking to addition to the bill. We're not. When, I will say it right here on the record, as Sunny has done before with me on the record, we're not looking to add addition to this bill. We can, we can easily take on the fire crews we're looking at. Number two, because it's been perception is reality. I will tell this board, as I sit right here, I look you all in the eyes, I have not invited any other person in this room other than Assistant Chief Black. No one has been invited by Chief Newhall to this meeting other than Assistant Chief Black, okay? Now, I want to get back to that first, all right? Now, with your two, I think that's great, but my comment back to that is, if we're going to do that, we do four. And I'll tell you why. That rounds off our shift, so we have two people, they have four people on the shift. That means they can always go on, not always, but they're capable of going on two medical calls. They can staff that. Also, two in, two out. Now, we have, so we're going to fires, we have now two people outside and inside, you know, who stands. Secondly, with that, next year, instead of putting the burden of two additional people on the taxpayers, we could now have them for three years. We're not doing that. We can still look over three years on how we can fund this. But we went with the four instead of the two.
But then at the end, four years.
Three, two.
Uh, three years, oh, three years, sorry, but, but three years. Then we have four full-time people that we're adding in one year.
So, I, I actually called somebody we all know, Chief Harrison.
Yeah.
And Worcester just hired sixty, six, I can't remember how many, how many they hired, sixty, yeah, it was sixty.
Yeah, yeah.
Most likely, at the end of that, they're not going to keep them. He was doing a little research and checking some things out, and there's a high percentage, he wasn't sure the number, of how many places that got the grants that don't keep people one step. So, it's not an unusual thing not to keep them one step.
And it's not unusual not to accept the full grant either. That was what my research was, was that, because, um, actually, you know, just for an example, some fire department in California got a, got ten people and a grant. Same exact grant is what this is.
That, that, they're doing the same thing.
But they couldn't take them all. So, they just put in for a, um...
A reduction.
A reduction, thank you. A reduction, because they couldn't, all right? So, it's not, um, it's, I guess it's not, um, you know, we're not going to cut off our noses to fight our face if we don't take all six of them when it comes to the grants, the FEMA grants, that's for sure. And, um, and again...
Respectfully, Chairman, is two is, gives us back to where we had two people. If we were to go with our two, four people, we'd round off your shifts, and that's just would help us out with our volume of calls. So, that's why I'm coming back, um, in all respect, that I would say four.
Okay, all right. Okay. Any other comments?
Yeah, I'm still waiting.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry about that.
No, it's on your fault, it's, she's front of the meeting. Over the previous ten years, you know the increase in call lines coming on the fire department?
I do. We are aware of that.
No, 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 I won't decide on that.
I don't know, I don't know the exact, I don't know what we have.
In the last three years, all the employees have been higher between retirements and nutrition in addition to the two previous people. How many of those full-time employees were full-time in other communities prior to coming to this one? Now, I'm asking, how many? Because you guys are up here claiming that we're going to poach, but not one person in recent hires has come from another department. So, we're staying on a crush. There's nothing on it. My other question is, based on the town administrator's instruction, you already accepted the grant to FEMA, is that going to affect the outcome of this, trying to reduce it to two versus six?
No, it will not.
No, it will not.
Yes, I have a question.
Yeah.
So, it's my understanding that we would get the money and then we withhold the money, and if we didn't spend it, it would go back, right?
The grant is a reimbursement.
No, it's a continuous reimbursement, so the money is set aside at wherever FEMA does the money is set aside, and then we put money, as we explicitly bill, essentially bill FEMA, and then return the money to us.
Because here, here's my, here's my question. In three years, are we not going to need those six people? So, right now, you have a way to pay for it. We could hire them. They could become integrated part of the community. Now, I say this because I'm a person who can't find a primary care physician, can't figure out which hospital to go to anymore when I need a medical emergency, and know if I call an ambulance, they could be at any one, what, a four or five hospitals transporting somebody. I think, I've always been one for safety, so I think I, as a taxpayer, would like the peace of mind knowing that if needed, I will always, within ten minutes or less, be able to get a medical professional in my possession, in my personal space, as I require. And if somebody else is going to foot that bill right now, and in three years, if we can't keep them, as long as they knew when we hired them, then, thank you for your service. Here's a runner of reference. Have a nice day. But I think with the, with the increase of population in the town, the more houses that are being built, the more people are coming in town, you can't guarantee us three years from now that we won't have two, four, six people three years from now.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I have a question. And I'm going to ask you and Batman also. When we hear from the police chief, which unfortunately, that's him today.
Yep.
Unfortunately, that's him.
I'm going to put him on the spot. We always hear about the staffing numbers. And the gentleman in the rear asked a lot of poignant questions. I guess maybe we get spoiled because we have qualified people that run the department and virtually no complaints on both departments. But when the police chief comes to us and says, I've lost one, but I've got, I've got somebody coming in, I've gone this, we don't really get involved in that. So, to ask some of those questions, they're probably, we don't have every question. I don't question Craig when he comes in about a road he's going to do. I don't question these, because that's what they do. We're sitting here trying to look over the taxpayers and the financial burden. That's what we're expected to do in this job for the best and well-being of the town.
Thank you, John.
With that, that being...
I, so, no, I'm getting, I'm coming to the real question now. As I said, the police chief would come in and say, well, I'm down two men. So, when you just said four, four gives you, what Mr. Murphy was talking about? Four does. Then I'll make this decision on another day, as far as I'm concerned. I will talk about, a little bit more about this. Because if that's what you're saying...
Well, I have a motion on the floor, so we either have to vote on it, or, well, we've got to come out of non-public. Go ahead, Mike. One more, one more statement. Go ahead.
One more statement for you to go is, remember, the police department's poaching every day now, because we have to, because this just happens to be the way it is. We're not doing anything any different than any other public citizens are doing around our entire area.
Everybody's poaching. It doesn't matter what it is. Everyone's poaching.
They poach them, us, too, when they get a chance. So, it's not, we're not worried about upsetting the apple cart around, because unfortunately, I'm worried about taking care of taxpayers and people in this town. So, if you want, and, and to be honest, all the people we have hired have been either call company somewhere else and have come to us. So, we've been very fortunate in that. And I can say, we're in front of this board, that I've been very fortunate that I've been able to keep my staff, and I have my staffing levels always up there. So, when we go to hire, we always get somebody to hire.
All right. Um, Alan, would you like to speak?
I would.
All right.
My exile of prayer. I've lived in Belmont for thirty-nine years this year, would be forty in 2023. I served on the budget committee for seven years. I served as the selectman for one term by my own decision. I had a criminal agreement. I was going to sit for one term, that is it. My observation is a handful of things. One is that I have a forty-plus-year history of involvement in public safety. And I think the Belmont Fire Department, and the citizens of Belmont are fortunate to have two leaders that they own in Mike and Deb Black, that are recognized by their peers as being clout-notch in the field that they're in, and they're respected across the state. We've always, in my opinion, going all the way back to my first round in the budget committee, the fire department has taken it to shorts. I can recall sitting at a budget committee one night where we had this lengthy discussion about how many pairs of gloves were provided for the fire department. Fast forward to the building of the new fire station, which was a undertaking that was not really part of the town's involvement. They did it pretty much on their own. Belmont's growing, and it's a good community. We have a lot going on in Belmont, lots of new building. People investing in the community, and things are coming really nicely, in my opinion. As a taxpayer in Belmont, I would like to see all six of these firefighters be hired, because that will bring us up to the NFPA standard, and that will have a positive impact on the rates that we all pay for fire insurance. I recall when I first got my house, one of the things that was a really big plus for us is that there was a dry hybrid about a hundred-and-fifty yards up the street from my home and according to my insurance policy, because I was that close to a hybrid, it gave me a pretty decent break on what I pay for fire insurance. I follow what these guys do closely, at all of the areas, in Belmont in particular, because I live here, obviously. They're running multiple back-to-back calls on a regular basis, where they're having to either double down like, like Tom mentioned about taking a pickup truck and going to a call, and they're going to wait till somebody brings the ambulance there, whether it's an accident or whatever. And that's just not right, and it's not fair for us to be putting the burden on the neutralized communities to the degree that we have to at some, at some times. So, the idea of poaching, I think, has been probably kicked around enough, but the reality of it is that if somebody says, you know, if Chief Newhall was to say to somebody in whatever department happens to be close by, hey, I got an opening, and I think you'd be a good fit in our department, that person makes that decision to change their career to a different department. That's, you know, if you want to call it poaching, fine, like you just said, it happens all over the place, it goes on constantly, any department. This grant has been in the works since the spring, I understand. So, the fact that it got approved for six people is no surprise. It's not like, oh, all of a sudden, it just landed on our doorstep. I understand that a consultant was used to help prepare the grant, to get it. You knew it was going to be six right out of the box. After the grant was approved by FEMA, it now suddenly is an issue. I don't want any higher taxes than I'm already paying. Nobody does. Anybody that says they do is, you know, is not being fruitful. But the reality of it is, I'm willing to pay the extra, whatever it costs me, either now or six years down the road to have really good service from our fire department. I had to avail myself of that service six years ago, and the service that was provided for me was exemplary. It was second to none. And I think we need to support these guys with these positions, and we should move forward and take the six firefighters. As the lady in the back said, in six years, if things turn south for us financially, we can't absorb those positions. Those folks came to the department knowing that they're on a grant. I had worked in public safety positions myself that were paid by federal grants. So, I understand what happens when the grant runs out. I was fortunate enough to absorb it into a different area of the department. But they know that going in, and if that happens, it's unfortunate. The bottom line there is that we'll have six people that could potentially go out to other communities, and I don't think that the shortages of public safety people, whether it's firefighters, police officers, paramedics, EMTs, or whatever, is going to go away in the next six years. So, they're not going to be out on the street homeless looking for money for a living. So, I would implore this board to take the grant as a stimulus for six firefighters now, and let's move on. Thank you.
Thanks, thank you. Unfortunately, I don't think we've had to discuss gloves at the budget committee level anymore. Unfortunately, I don't think we've had to discuss gloves at the budget committee level anymore. I think the budget committee, as well as the selectmen, have more than supported this fire department. I think I told you what, a year ago, you ought to order, order your next ambulance. Remember, we had this discussion a year ago because I was concerned about the, um.
Lead time.
The lead time, all right? And, and we're running into that right now, obviously, okay? So I think that, um, I think this board has more than supported the fire department. Yes, sir?
One more question. In the process here, research commission department of California, that somebody mentioned one is Marimack.
That was just one that was.
No, that's fine. I, I understand that. So having some knowledge on, on Marimack's base, um, did Marimack get awarded the grant and then petition for four? Or did they accept the full eight and then petition? No, I, I understand, Chief, Chief, with all due respect, they, they.
Let's, let's keep things a little bit under control. I don't know what Marimack does, and I don't care. I'm worried about this. All right?
I'm asking for the answers for your research.
I didn't want.
So somebody did.
No, I brought Marimack. Like, she, she brought up California, I brought up Marimack.
Right, because that was what was given to me.
We just gave one in the Hampshire, who had reduced their.
And they, and they, did they?
They accepted the grant, they tried to fill it, they didn't fill it, and they went and threw it back to FEMA and said, hey, we can't fill this, and they reduced it.
And they did reduce it. Okay, thank you.
My understanding is, is that that has been the case across the country?
Nope.
They accept it, and when they can't fill the positions, then they petition for less. Mine was.
That's right, and they usually do get.
But that's a lot different than accepting a grant and then saying, oh, no, actually, we only want two.
No, that's, no. We have accepted the grant, and then we can reduce it. That is not uncommon.
Could I have a disrepresented practice?
All right.
There's just, uh, Greg Bayless, is that okay?
Yeah.
Good morning. My name is Greg Bayless. I work for first responder grants. I assisted the town of Belmont with the, um, safer grant.
Yeah.
And as Chief Newhall was speaking about, the Marimack Fire Department, they, they did award eight positions.
Okay.
The board decided to cut it down to four and supplant four that they'd hired within that year.
Yeah.
So they got eight positions. They took the money for the four they hired within that year for the better government for free, put it into their account, and then they used the other four to hire four more. So something to think about. When I went to the hearings in Marimack in front of their boards, one of the big things they brought up is where is the retirement nutrition rate gonna be again in three years? So you may not have to fill those positions. If you have people on staff that are already training or what they're doing, you don't have to spend a month digging and researching to find something. So that's why I just wanted to clear that up. If there's any other questions about the safety grant, you know?
All right, okay, all right, all right. We will close public comment. And gentlemen, what would you?
Well, I'll make a motion to accept the motion that you put on the floor.
Okay, all right.
I'll second it.
Okay. On favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. So then, um, I guess, I guess I'm in fa- I'm in favor of accepting the grant for hiring the two firefighters under the conditions that the positions are grant-funded, and when the grant funding runs out in twenty twenty-six, the town of Belmont does not make any commitment to retain the employees, all right? I also wanted in record that after review of the grant application, it is stated that the board of selectmen are in favor of hiring six employees and agree to retain the six at the conclusion of the grant. This is in fact a large misrepresentation, and nowhere in any prior meeting was this discussed and/or voted on. Okay? I just want that, because that was one of the things that was out there, that we had agreed to hire all six at a meeting. That is incorrect. And, and we as a board agreed with the chief to move forward with applying for the grant, but at no time made any commitments on how many to retain. In light of this, I'd like to make another motion, and that's that our town administrator create a formal grant policy that all departments must follow moving forward. And no grant will be sent out without the town administrator's signature. That is a motion. If you, gentlemen, would like.
I'll second that motion.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And that will be townwide, obviously. Okay?
Just on a clarity, Chief, you say for the grant, so you want to, you want to just reduce it, you ask for two instead of a six?
Right.
If the feds come back and say, no, we can't, we can't reduce it to two, then that means you're throwing the grant out altogether.
Perfect. Awesome. Thank you.
Okay, all right.
I would, uh, ask.
Yeah.
The board to reconsider the floor.
All right. I'm sorry, what?
People have to buy that over. Uh, I've been in the department for five years. And you guys, have you guys ever been on a fire, fire department or a call company or a skin?
I think that's not called for, Peter. I think that, you know.
No, ma'am. What I'm saying is, I sit there at home after doing a forty-eight-hour shift or, or whatever I'm doing. I sit there and I have to listen to the calls. Come on, come on, come on. And I say, oh, do I want to sit home with my new wife, or do I want to go help the people that I work with? And some of us are getting tired. I've been there for five years. We're exhausted. Hiring more people would take less burden on us, and we're, we're exhausted. Lieutenant Murphy's my lieutenant. We're tired. And that's the biggest thing, is that's why we want these guys, because, so I don't have to sit there and hear a retweet. Have Gilmington come over, Laconia come over. It's, it's not right. And we're doing more. We're putting more houses in, putting more industry in, but you don't want to upgrade this. That's fine.
Thank you.
Do what you will.
Okay.
Thank you.
This heart.
Do we have? Please. Do we have any other obismos?
We do not.
All right. Um, we have non-public, um.
Close the meeting.
Oh, all right. Can I have a motion to close the meeting?
So moved.
Second, all right. All in favor? Aye. Um, we have to move into non-public, um, Dean ninety-one dash eight, colon, three, Roman numeral, Roman numeral number two, letter.
Uh, C.
C. Um, Rocco?
Sonny Gooden.
Ruth Moody.
Don Pike.
Thank you, everyone.
I'm gonna, you would do the non-public first, because I want to go inside. No, when you leave, you may come out.
I'll just stand home, up on the windows. Yes, we're wearing both in the window, both.
Can I just get a card for the meeting on, um, that proposal, your, your day two with the grant? Are you talking about adding two next year?
Possibly. Yeah, that would.